All right, good evening. I'd like to call the June 8, 2023 meeting of Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly. I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Protem Rose Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's always thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for the ones who have come out to the meeting. And God let it be done decent and in your thoughts and in your minds as we make decisions for the people of Greenville. Bless this council, bless the city of Greenville, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Connolly of accord.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Mayor, I would request that the council add a closed session for economic development, and the attorney will have the motion at the end of the meeting.
Move to approve the agenda as revised.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Move on to special recognitions.
I'm going to start and then choose.
As many of you know, it's always a real pleasure of mine to be able to recognize the good work, great work of our city staff, and I have that honor this evening. This evening, I'd like to recognize Greenville Police Department telecommunications Nate Brown, Jaques Spivey, and Nate King, who were named the North Carolina Association of Public Safety Communications Officials Team of the Year for 2023. I'm going to turn it over to Chief Salz, who'll speak to this nomination and award.
So this incident is a very perfect example of what the ladies and gentlemen that are in our communications room are faced with on a daily basis. This incident stemmed from a caller who called and was kind of irate, also emotional and upset, and for a very good reason, without giving a specific reason that the person was in crisis, they had committed a very serious crime when they themselves called. So our caller, which we received the call from, is telling us what's going on, but it's something that they themselves had done. And as they dispatched the call, so when they're working in the comms room, you've got one on Channel 1 dispatching the call, one taking the call from the citizen, and a lot of times the other person entering information, updating information, and helping the person on Channel 1 make sure the officers are safe. So as the officers are responding to the call, they realize that the caller is in fact also the person responsible for the incident that they're responding to. That person, in a roundabout way, tries to talk themselves into a situation where the officers may be forced to engage or hurt them. So the dispatchers were able, that's an old word, by the way, dispatchers, we call them telecommunications now, but there'll always be dispatchers for me. So the three were able to pull the officers back, give the officers time to regroup, without allowing the officers to get there so fast, or maybe one by themselves, and then be faced with this individual. The officers were able to formulate a plan, talk the person out of the house, out of the structure that he was in, cause him to be taken into custody without incident. Once inside, they found the crime that he had committed and the manner in which he had done it. So they were able to save a life, when in fact, a lot of times, they, maybe even law enforcement in general, maybe everybody doesn't consider always just how many lives they do save. And it's our job to also save the lives of those who may have done something wrong. And in this case, that's exactly what they did, and it made them eligible. Their supervisor, who does not want to come up for the picture, but I'm going to make her anyway, Ms. Virginia Bridwell is with us. She put them in for the award, so come on up here because I want you in this picture. And they went to their conference this year, the Telecommunicators Conference, and were awarded as telecommunications team of the year.
Got it. Congratulations.
Good job.
All right, move on to the second most anticipated part of the night, the public comment period. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing discuss or conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order to register until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who do not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Yes, our first speaker is Mr. Don Cosgrove. Mr. Cosgrove, you have three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Don Anderson Cosgrove. I'm here to speak quickly about Village of the Arts. We moved here from Florida at the worst of the pandemic, and while we were in Florida in Bradenton, in 1999 and 2000, an artist by the name, well, his name slips my mind, a Jamaican, very known artist, had purchased a home in Bradenton, close to downtown, and he and his wife and two other artists approached the city with neighbors, and that's what formulated a live-work relationship that that neighborhood formed with the city. And from that day forth, from 2000 up until when we left in 2020, and the reason why we left was we got tired of the heat. But we moved into the village in 2013 as an experiment. We had moved to Florida from Colorado. We were there for a year, and we had heard about the village. My wife's an artist. We visited there. We rented a house that had a gallery in the front, and we were there for 18 months, and then we bought a house that was going to be torn down, renovated it, and then we had that until we sold and we moved here. But the thing of it is, from a neighborhood with no direction 20-some years ago, today there's 65 artists that live and own there. There's five restaurants, there's a microbrewery, there's a bakery, and it's a very area that if you go into the city of Bradenton, it's one of the places that is mentioned, Village of the Arts, to make sure you go to. And as a community, you know, every month there's an art walk, but one of the key things that is done every year for Halloween, the art district reaches out to local grade schools, and generally we have 600 kids that are in the village on that night for trick-or-treating, and it becomes quite a big event. So I'm just here to kind of give you an idea of what a village of the arts and the district can actually do and what it can help a city with. And I've been, myself, I've been thinking of West Greenville. I've got a, I have a vision that could be done out there, and I just think there's something. And I've been reaching out to some locals, and they try to get a feel and a few of the more leader people, and I plan on doing more of that, but that's basically what I'm here to do tonight. We've met with a few of you people, we've met with some city people in departments, and pretty much have gotten some positives. The live-work is, you know, with that zoning, there's, you know, there's a few things that have to be worked on, but if what they did there was just a very, a great relationship between the artists, the people that actually live with the artists in that community, and their city council, the public works, and everyone is really on the same page there. And it's a really great experience for people to be there. So thanks for the time.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Cosgrove. All right, Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
There are no additional speakers.
Anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. We'll close the public comment period, move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Picking up from the appointments that were concluded Monday night, we need two appointments for the Greenville E&amp;C Alliance.
Councilmember Bell?
I would like to nominate Will Litchfield.
Okay. All right.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Cargill.
Okay. Jennifer Cargill?
I got that name right. Okay.
There are two motions.
All right.
Any other nominations?
We just needed two.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Are we good to do both at the same time?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, put you on the spot. We're not even into the heart of the meeting yet.
I think that's fine, as long as Madam Clerk is, that's sufficient, but I would probably, for belt and suspenders, request a vote on that.
We will, we will. All right. Motion has been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley for Will Litchfield, and then motion was made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels for Jennifer Cargill. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion's passed six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Litchfield. Congratulations, Ms. Cargill.
Next, we have our boards and commissions. First is Affordable Housing Loan Committee, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm going to continue that.
Okay. Next is the Board of Adjustment. We have several appointments. First is Councilmember Bell for Ann Bell's seat.
I'd like to nominate Dylan Gobbler.
Second, unless, if he requires one.
All right.
Is it a direct appointment?
No.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero. Next, we have Councilmember Smiley for McKinnon's seat.
I'm continuing that.
Okay. Next, we have Mayor Connolly for John Landrein's seat.
I'm going to ask the incredible council to nominate Carol Ann Bass.
Nominate Carol Ann Bass.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Bass.
Okay. Next, we have the Environmental Advisory Commission for the engineer, someone with awareness of construction practices seat, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm very close to having a nominee for that, so I will continue it.
Next is the GUC, or Greenville Utilities Commission. That is an automatic reappointment for Kelly Darden. Next is the Housing Authority, the resident commissioner's seat. They have nominated Ms. Ebony Harris, and this requires you all to formally appoint her by a motion.
I'm hoping that will be nominated, Ms. Harris. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Right, motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Harris.
Next, also for the Housing Authority is Mayor Protem Glover for Luke Stavish's seat. He is eligible to be reappointed.
Housing Authority. Who's that?
Luke Stavish.
Okay. I'll recommend him to be the nominee, renominated.
All right. Just need a second.
Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Stavish.
Next is the Human Relations Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
Okay. Human Relations Council, I'd like to appoint Denisha Alsbrook.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Ms. Alsbrook.
Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission, Councilmember Robinson.
I would like to continue that to the next council meeting, please. Thank you.
Next is the Airport Authority, Councilmember Smiley.
Continue.
Okay. Next, oh, still with the Airport Authority, Councilmember Robinson.
I would like to reappoint Dan Mayer to a second term.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Mail.
Okay. Next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Councilmember Smiley.
Continue.
Okay. Next is the Planning and Zoning Commission, Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm going to continue that.
Also, planning and zoning, Councilmember Smiley.
Yeah, let's continue as well.
Okay. Also, planning and zoning, Mayor Protem Glover.
I want to reappoint Alan Thomas. Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
All right, motion passes six zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, next is the Police Community Relations Committee. This is a direct appointment, Mayor Protem Glover.
Police Communications, I'm going to continue.
And finally, we have the Youth Council, Mayor Protem Glover.
Youth Council, I'd like to reappoint Michael Bodie.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Protem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
Motion passes six zero, and that concludes the appointment.
Congratulations, Mr. Brody. All right, we'll go to, move on to Old Business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item three under Old Business is an update on 902 Ward Street, which is tax parcel 06722, and we'll call forward Sylvia Brown, Code Enforcement Supervisor, for a brief presentation. Ms. Brown?
Madam Manager? Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Tonight, I am here to give you an update on 902 Ward Street, and just a second. Just as a reminder, on September the 8th, staff came before the council. At that council meeting in 2022, you made a motion to table the agenda. At that time, it was to demolish the property. The homeowner was given 180 days to make improvements, and that 180 days ended on March the 8th of this year. In April, staff came before the council and was directed to meet with Mr. Wilson, who was the property owner, and report back to you at your first meeting in June. And on April the 26th, staff followed your directive, met with Mr. Wilson and his sister, and verbally agreed to several milestones that we'll review at this time. The first milestone was, we gave him, he was given a deadline of May the 19th to provide to staff a written construction timeline, as well as a detailed written construction cost estimate to include labor and materials. The following milestones are milestones that will be included in the agreement once we get a little bit further into the presentation on tonight. The first milestone is to obtain all trade permits, including plumbing, electrical, and mechanical, also to give access to associated staff, applicable staff, as necessary to monitor the status throughout the construction process. He must pass associated inspections in order before covering and/or removing, moving to the next phase of any of the trades, the three trades, and to keep the working grounds clean and secure. We're asking that he communicate with staff, at least on a bi-weekly basis, concerning his progress, any questions or problems. Staff wants to be fully available to assist him whenever necessary. The property should not be occupied during the construction period, and not until an official certificate of occupancy or a temporary CO is issued, as well as any other milestones that you, the council, may set. And the owner too should enter into a signed agreement with the city outlining these milestones upon your approval of any time extension that you might grant on tonight. On May the 19th, as I mentioned earlier, the owner did submit documents to staff. Staff reviewed his submissions and expressed to him some of the, some concerns that we had about those documents. And so there was some conversation between staff and Mr. Wilson, and he was allowed to update those documents and to bring back updated documents. We provided, staff provided him with examples of a construction timeline, as well as construction cost estimate. And the chief building inspector has advised that Mr. Wilson did submit his owner, his homeowner exemption form. And here are just a few pictures, and these pictures, as you can see, are from April of this year. And the reason these are the pictures that we are showing on tonight is because staff was not allowed to re-inspect the property prior to tonight's meeting. So the options are to extend an additional, any additional time to the owner to rehabilitate the dwelling and require the owner to enter into a written agreement with the city, outlining the milestones that were mentioned, or to approve the ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling at 902 Ward Street. We can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Brown? Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate it. I thought it was understanding that we took off the labor cost for him to provide that to us.
No, ma'am. The item that was taken off was for him to show us, like, bank statements that he had the funds to make the repairs. The labor and material is part of a construction estimate cost, shows what would be the estimate to make the full repairs on the property. And so that is part of...
Why would we do that?
Why would we do that?
Like, do we do that for everybody?
Well, I don't know if the chief building inspector might be able to address why labor and materials is included in a cost estimate.
Typically, labor and materials would be included because that is how the calculation of the permit fees are derived.
Is that the norm for everybody?
From when we, when, I'll let, I should let the building officials speak.
Okay.
Good evening. I'll jump in first. As far as the estimates, this is the first case that we've had like this to require estimates dealing with the demolition. So this is...
Say that again, why? Is this your first?
He's the first one through the demolition process from code enforcement standpoint to contest it and want to rehab it. He's the only one we've had to deal with this. So therefore, we request an estimate from his part to make sure we're in line with all the repairs that we see need to be made.
Okay. It doesn't make sense to me still, because if this is...
As far as permitting, I'll let Mr. Mills speak to this a little further, but...
No, I get the permit. We discussed that the last, I get that.
But right, but we also, on all those, get cost estimates to whatever the project will be.
So whenever we have something that may be demolished, we ask for cost estimates?
Yes.
In general?
Yes.
And we have that in writing as a requirement?
No, I just want to be clear. So in order to determine the cost of a building permit, the fee associated with the building permit, it's based on the value, in many cases, the value of the work that's being done. And in order to determine the value of the permit for anybody, regardless if it's a demolition or new construction or rehab or repair, we're going to have to understand the cost of those improvements. We do that for everybody.
But when you do, when you get a permit, that means the work's already been done?
No, ma'am. A permit means you are able to do...
So you give it to them previously?
A permit means you are able to do the work, not that the work has been done.
So we have it documented that that's a requirement?
Yes.
That people have to give us the thing?
Yes.
Okay. When you, I'm sorry, thank you, Ms. Brown. When you say any other milestones, what does that mean? It sounds kind of broad.
Any milestones that the council may want to include in the agreement. So the milestones that I listed are the ones that staff has suggested, and milestones that we talked with Mr. Wilson and his sister about, including in the agreement. So we wanted to, I guess, leave it open if there were any other things that council might want to add.
Okay, and I appreciate that, ma'am. One more question. If I could recollect, and I'm a little older, but did we make appointments with him, Mr. Wilson, and then he didn't allow us in, or?
We did, yes, ma'am.
So we made appointments?
Yes, ma'am. The code enforcement officer contacted him, and he agreed to allow us in, and then he called and left me a message on June the 2nd saying that he had changed his mind and would not allow us to re-inspect.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Blackburn?
If you would, bear with me, because I may cover the same ground that Councilmember Daniels did. I'm trying to get clarity. So going back to what we ordinarily do when some, let me go, let me, the simple question. Has a building permit been applied for?
And received.
Yes, ma'am.
So we theoretically have all the information we need in terms of cost estimate?
The permit, yes, ma'am, it has been applied for. The original permit that was applied for was applied for $30,000 worth of construction cost.
Okay. So is there any reason to believe that that's changed?
Yes.
Yes.
The staff estimate for the property to be fully repaired is $157,701.8.
So do we customarily ask people who are doing repairs, do we provide them what we think it's going to cost?
We have a formula that we can use, yes, ma'am.
And so we tell them, for instance, let's just say, I have someone who's going to, I don't know, repair my second-floor facade, and I, he has, this repair person, he or she has told me it's going to cost $15,000. What's the cutoff for a building permit? It's 15?
Oh, it's now $20,000.
20, okay.
Or something structural. That number's what it is.
Okay, so I've got some choice. It's got to be repaired. It's going, and I, my handy person has said it's going to cost $25,000. I come to you, and I apply for a building permit. Do you all tell me, no, we're going to come look? We determined it's going to cost $50,000. Is that customary?
We have a, basically, we have a formula that we use, and we use construction cost or the formula, or what is actually greater of the two, is what we use.
And so you do that across the board with everybody?
That's our premise.
If I come to you and tell you I need a building permit for $25,000, are you going to automatically come to my house, inspect, and tell me, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Blackburn, this is going to cost $50,000?
I'm going to look at the construction cost, and I'm also going to look at the square footage that you're giving. You're going to give me the square footage, and we're going to calculate the cost based off of that. And then we're going to take the greater of the two, is what we're going to do, to issue your permit by.
And so that is a standard practice, which you're also applying in this case?
Yes. If I may, this may help answer this. It started as a code enforcement case, not with a building permit. So we've seen the level of repairs that are needed, and in conjunction with the permit, we have some, though we're not exact estimators, we do have some day-to-day knowledge of, about what cost would be included, and we want to make sure they're on the same page. If somebody came in and said, I want to build a new home, 2,000 square feet, it's only going to cost me $5. I'm exaggerating, but we know that's not realistic. So that's checks and balances. It started as a code case, and we know the repairs that need to be made. So that's what kind of led to that.
Thank you for the, I appreciate all that information. So kind of back to my original question, this is a customary requirement that someone provide you. Can you go back to the slide of the milestones?
While she's doing that, I'll also state that on previous demo requests that have come through, we have provided repair estimates on those structures from our side. One of the things is, we do want the customer to provide one. That way, if there's an extreme difference, we communicate and try to find out what's not being, what is or what is not being included.
And so that's customary with any building permit?
Yes. We run estimates on all those things with code enforcement that are submitted as demolition ordinance requests.
Okay, so, but that's for demolition. What about for building permits, as is the case here? Okay, so, but that's for demolition, what about for building permits, as is the case here? I guess the confusion I have is the person already has the building permits. While, while, and please advance to the next slide if you would. Why are we, why are we asking for, maybe it was the next one after this. Why are we asking for, why are we asking him to provide, you know, a financial estimate if we've already got the building permit? Would you do that with anybody else?
Well, we also, depending. We do not, unless it's been applied for recently. I don't believe all the trade permits have been obtained. And as an, the owner, he submitted his owner statement that he was pulling his permits. A lot of that is handled through licensing with the state when a licensed contractor comes in. They've been through the testing, sureties, insurance, and so forth. And we got that through the state licensing. So we kind of work with their, they give us a overall cost. We don't ask for the details. But in order for us to be on the same page in this situation that started with a code enforcement case that led to having to get a building permit, yes, we would ask for that documentation to make sure we're all on the same page.
So has this kind of situation ever happened before? I think I heard you say, actually, no.
This is the first case that someone has come and requested that we not demo the structure as a result of a code enforcement case, and they want to repair.
So my next question is, this construction timeline, is that customary for us to ask that of any, of other people who are repairing their home?
Others that get normal building permits are not under a possible, possible order of demolition.
The reason, this, this has many angles to it. It's not just a building permit. This is, again, I go back to it started with a code enforcement case and needing to be repaired. And it's over, the estimates we have are, show it's well over 50% damaged, or 50% of the value of the-
You want to follow up? Well, I just have a question again. What do we have as a city for appeals on demolition? I just want her to get up. No.
So in terms of appeal, an appeals process, once council has ordered a property to be, to be demolished, once we've gone through the proper process, we've done the notice, we've done the hearing, we've issued the order, that shows the property is at a stage where the values of the repair are more than 50% of the value of the property. And we come to council, ask for a demolition order. Once that order is approved and put in place, we, the property owner then has 30 days to appeal that order to superior court. So that is the appeals process as it relates to any type of demolition order by law.
Okay. Ms. Alexander, do you want to share how that information is shared with the, with the property owner?
In terms of?
Is it included in the letter that's provided to them?
Absolutely, absolutely. And so whenever we, the, whenever you talk about a code enforcement case, and especially one at this level as it relates to minimum housing, you go through the process and you issue a notice of hearing. You provide notice to the property owner, they're allowed to come to the hearing, contest the facts, hear the information. And at that stage, we issue an order, the code enforcement issues the order. And that is then notice to the property owner as well. So at each stage in the process, we are giving notice to the owner of not only what is going on with their property, but also the appeals rights that come along with, with these stages in the process. And that's required as a constitutional perspective in that we've got to give due process in, in terms of moving to take somebody's property, which is, which is an authority we have. But like I say, you've got to make sure you've met due process as it relates to the constitution.
And I got just a couple more questions quickly.
Councilor Blackburn?
I'm, I'm concerned that we don't know the current state of the House, because we weren't able to see pictures. Can, do, is there, is it possible to have an understanding of why the inspection, the inspection that was scheduled for June 2nd, with the consent of the property owner, didn't take place? Is it possible to have that information?
So that, that would be information, I imagine that would come from the property owner at this point. And so I don't know that that's information staff has to understand why that did not happen.
Can we get that information? This, yeah, this is not a public hearing, because that's, I looked at the, yeah, because of that very reason, yeah. Can, can we have that information? Can we, can we hear that information?
Just invite him to come in?
I don't see why not, I don't, not, not, don't see why not.
They can't invite him, you have to.
The city council.
Yes, I'd like to hear then, yeah, I'd like to hear then from the Wilsons. Good evening.
I know y'all know me, because I know you. The reason why I did not let them come in on that last inspection is because when I was here the first time, and I allowed Mr. Whitney to come in, because like I say, my door's open. I was expecting him to show some of the good work I'd done. But the only thing he showed y'all was just scarred and stuff that I hadn't repaired, everything that was negative. So you already came, pictures, you're building a case, well, I'm going to let him come in now. If I'm going to allow you in, I know you're not coming in to help me, you're not going to take a picture of nothing positive. So that's why I said, no, because we go on the city council on a, this was just Monday. And I, and I thought about it, because I was allowing everybody in, but nobody showed none of the fencing, nothing that I did positive, everything was negative. So I understand what's going on here, and I see y'all do too. So that's why I'm just going to say, you know, I'm leaving it up to y'all. I got, I, I did everything they asked me to do. I put my permit, I mean, the permits in. Or they got rejected because during that first meeting, you remember I was shut down, my permit was tipped. For no reason, they didn't tell me, but they closed me down. All right? When I went to my first meeting with them, when I got there, the permit was mysteriously reinstated. And then after that, because I had already put in for the plumbing and electrical permit, because that one was reinstated, and under the same permit number, the two that I applied for were kicked back out. So I got to put them in with the first number of the permits that I had. And that's the reason, and the reason why this is the first case that y'all seen like this is because when they talking about the letter, and I supposed to give them talk with y'all before, it got on a demolition list, that letter I didn't get, because every meeting that I was supposed to, I would been there. When I got these letter, I noticed my house is on a demolition list. Like I'm telling y'all, today is a year when I was in my yard and obtained. And like I say, eight, 138 bullets. Is that a normal, when you got a code agreement that that many police officers and everybody come to your house? Is that a norm?
I'll talk to us.
And then not only that, the money thing. You mean to tell me a poor man can't put his house together no more? Is this not America anymore? That's all I can say, I didn't do, I, I'm a law-abiding citizen. I didn't ask to be here, don't want to be here. Worked hard, paid for my property, and somebody burned it down. The people that burned it down, it's some of your people. Carlton Dawson was, was involved in that. Rick Jackson called and let him know when the coast was clear. Michael Hines, a dope fiend, had to open the door and went in and burned my house down. And, and right now, what y'all saying about me, money, being poor, and all of this, is irrelevant. I can put my house together, my family is behind me. My grandson ain't thinking about college, but he ain't college now. To be electrician, I wonder why? I got a son who quit his high-powered job to come down here. He working now, he's supposed to be here at 8:00, because he don't want his father home.
Mr. Wilson, let me ask you this.
Yes.
Have any of you taken any pictures of your own, since you don't trust the staff to do it? Do you guys have any pictures that you can show us?
I can get all them for you. I can show you the progress, and I can show you, see, they're not going to tell you about the standing structure law. They're not going to say anything about, you know, that I should have told Mr. Wilson, because he's a property owner, he could have been the head contractor, and he could have pointed out these different things. You know, that was kept because he just want to take my property.
Well, so this is where, where I am with it, okay? We, we made an agreement, because you know, I'm going to, I agree to stand and help you. But you also agree that you were going to do some things. And I understand some trust was broken somewhere, I get it. But we have to keep our word, we can't say I'm not keeping my word just because somebody else chooses not to, to keep theirs, if, in your eyes. And if they say, if you don't, we agree that you were going to let them in, they will call you, you make an appointment. And so you have to give me something to fight with.
Yes ma'am.
Okay? And, and I, I understand it's been a long process, I understand, you know, money's tight, everybody's going through their season right now. But I feel like you're giving up hope, and when you're giving up hope, you're kind of like stopping stuff, and you're not working with anybody. Because we talked about the permits, right?
Yes ma'am.
We talked about the appointments, we talked about a whole bunch of stuff that I don't feel like you're sticking to your end. And, and again, I get it, but it still has to happen.
Yes ma'am, the permits have been applied for.
No, 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 we agreed, we, we agreed that when they, when, say you got some electric, electrical work done.
Yes ma'am.
You were going to contact city staff, they were going to look at it before you went on to the next thing, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, has that been done?
No ma'am.
Okay.
Like, excuse me, this is what's been happening. On that permit, especially the electrical permit, because on my timeline that I provided for y'all, I said I was going to be attacking the electrical first so we can get lighting around there and keep things secure. Okay, that permit was kicked out because of the other permit that I had. The permit was all, I mean, when he shut it down, I did not have none. So I went to apply for them. When I was sitting down at the meeting, he said that permit was reinstated. So the other two that I applied for were kicked out. But they have been reapplied for right now, under the, under the old permit number. So ma'am, I've been doing that, the permits were there. They were kicked out because I didn't know he was going to reinstate that permit.
Right, but was the work done? Because that, that, not so much the permit, the, the agreement was the work was going to be done, you were going to contact somebody from staff, and then they were going to let you know this is okay. And that was for your protection? Because we didn't want any more fires or anything like that.
But you can't do the work without a permit, excuse me for interrupting. Is that, is that this, this situation?
I can't do the work without the permit. I applied for the permit to have the work done. But the old permit that I had, which was a mechanical permit to do a little bit of everything, because it was shut down before I came the last time, I knew it was going to be shut down, no reason. So when I reapplied to make sure that these permits were there, so that I could start on doing that, the old permit kicked them out. That's the only reason I'm here today with data. Now, they, they've been reapplied for, they should be online by now. The plumbing, I should have that water turned on tomorrow. But I, I couldn't do anything because I ain't the way I'm at. Because once I start, like I've been before, I'll start. I'm just here to let y'all know that I can do this, and I will do this, and I've been applying. Everything they've been asking me to do, I've been doing that.
To councilmember Daniels' point, could we get pictures of the work, even if you took them? Could we get access to the, to the work that you have done?
Yes ma'am, you can get access to the work I have done. I did not bring no pictures with me tonight. But I'll make sure I get y'all pictures, and I will show, and I will walk through and let you know exactly what I was doing and doing now. But I don't want to go in front of the permits, because like I said, I'm trying not to get any violations. I'm trying to stay within my limits for as the city.
But, so, help me to understand.
Yes ma'am.
You don't want to get the permit because you don't want to be in violation, is that?
Yes ma'am, I want the permits. What I'm trying to say, I had that mechanical permit in place, I was doing that work. I was shut down, came here to the meeting. We all talked about the proposal, I gave it to, I did what I was supposed to do in that. The permits was applied for. So I had to call and find out why, you know, what's going on. They said, they don't know for sure. So when we sit down, I asked Mr. Mills, him and his people, they went to the permit place and told me why. Told me that I, your, your other permit was reinstated.
And how lo, how long ago was that?
The meeting we had on the, the 19th?
Remember the date, Ms. Brown?
Yes ma'am.
Do you remember the date of the meeting that he's talking about?
The meeting when he met with staff?
Is, is that the one?
I'm sorry, what, what would you like to know, I apologize.
He, he, Mr. Wilson states that you, is that correct, Mr. Wilson? You were given the permit after a meeting?
Yes ma'am, but this is the information that I went, because I wanted to find out, I took my, the affidavit about my contract. And I wanted to find out what was going on with the, the permits, because I had applied for the plumbing and the electrical permit, and I, they were kicked back, and he told me that. Would you explain?
Yes, um, his, his original permit, when he applied for it, based on state statute, if you don't have any inspections within six months, that permit is automatically deemed invalid. That's not a Greenwood law, that's a state law. That's a state law. We do have the authority as the local jurisdiction to reinstate those permits with or without penalty. In this case, we reinstated his permit without penalty. We reinstated his permit. When, it's my understanding, through my staff, that when he applied for his electrical permit, he applied for a, what we call an independent or a standalone electrical permit. That was applied for incorrectly. The way you have to apply for that permit is you go in, under your building permit, it's there, you apply for an electrical permit, those two permits are linked together, they're basically tied together throughout the project. So when he originally applied for his electrical permit, that permit was rejected. He has, when, when you have an account with the city, you, you basically go in and you apply for this account, and, and you are notified that, that is done. When he came in, we explained, I did explain it to Mr. Wilson. He also brought in his affidavit that he was going to become his own contractor, basically because of the cost of the project was, was going up. And the state of North Carolina allows you to do that, and he prevented, he, he provided us with that affidavit, and we attached that to his building permit. So he, he has an active building permit. And, and I'm not sure if he has applied, he says he has, he probably has. Only electrical permits, he has properly applied for those. I don't know whether they've been issued or not, I'm flat-footed, I should have that answer for you, but I do not. But, but I, I don't know. If, if he hasn't paid for it, then, then he does not have those permits. He may have applied for them, but they have not yet been issued.
Yes, so I applied for them, but because they were, like I said, in the kickback stage, and that just was recent, they didn't get back to me, but we will get those, they will be paid for. Just like I said, about the water should be on tomorrow, the permit should be paid for, but I had to get them, like I said, reapplied for them under the old building permit number that I had.
So who's going to turn the water on?
Jerome Wilson, I mean.
I got that. But I'm saying, is that a GUC thing, or, I mean, who does the water? Because the plumbing, all that has to be approved as well, correct?
Right, um, see, like I say, if you, in this, before I say, a lot of plumbing work happened done years ago from a prior permit and all these things that have been done. See, a lot of thing that is not being spoken upon is that I was doing this house, it was seven years since this house was burned down. I put flooring, I did plumbing, I had people come help me, because see, this was not a hurry-up thing until, like I said, a year ago, at, in the middle of the night, here it go.
Okay, so I want to stay on task.
Yes ma'am.
So is there a plumbing permit needed for the water to be turned on tomorrow?
The plumbing system-
I don't know construction, so y'all have to figure it out.
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's okay. The, the, the plumbing system in its current configuration, we would not authorize anything to be turned on until the home receives a certificate of occupancy, until we would deem it that it's, it's livable. If GUC would turn it on a different way, then that would be between Greenwood Utilities and Mr. Wilson. But we, it's the same thing would be with power, we would not send an authorization to them to turn it on. But he may have an agreement with Greenwood Utilities that they would turn it on. But, but the home itself, the, the plumbing system has not been inspected or passed any inspections.
So you won't turn the water on anywhere until a home has a certificate of occupancy?
We, we issue, what we do is we send over to Greenwood Utilities a notification that a certificate of occupancy has been issued. They're, they're notified in writing by our department that, that it meets a certain criteria. And, and they're notified that it's, that we, we have authorized the utility to be connected to the home. Same thing with gas and things of that nature.
And, and is that required for every home, that they have that?
That would be, if, if Greenwood Utilities requires us to do that, that would be required. There are times that Greenwood Utilities would turn on water in different situations. If they had turned it off, they may turn it back on. But a lot of times, they will contact us if there's a certificate of occupancy. And we would tell them, not at this time, because we always notify them when we, when we give one.
Mayor, can I just, just as a point of reference, just, just remind the council where we are today. When this matter came before you two months ago, you asked us to explore an agreement with Mr. Wilson that would document a path forward for Mr. Wilson. And today, that is what is before you, is an agreement that, and Sylvia, I'm going to ask you to advance the slides. And that agreement, can you go back, okay? And that agreement, can you go back? Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. And, and these are milestones that we discussed, I think, with the council the night of that meeting, okay? Uh, 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 we need trade permits. We, and, and these are milestones that are included in the agreement. They're not required to be done tonight. They're, what we're saying to Mr. Wilson is, these are the things we're gonna need you to do. We're gonna need you to get your plumbing, your electrical, your mechanical permit. We're gonna need you to work with staff. So there is appropriate access so that we can inspect the work that's getting done. We're gonna need you to pass inspections. We're gonna need you to keep the worksite clean. We're going to need you to communicate with staff if there are any questions. We're going to need to ignore, for you to acknowledge that you nor anyone else can live in that structure until there is a certificate of occupancy. And any other milestones that the council wants to add to this agreement. And then what the plan would be for Mr. Wilson and the city to sign the agreement, which then going forward would assist the staff as well as Mr. Wilson with a plan for how to move forward. Now, it is important to point out that, that very rarely, certainly in the almost six years that I've been with the city, we have not had a homeowner who has come to us to say they did not want the structure demolished. Mr. Wilson is the first time that that has happened. This is crafting new ground for city staff, as probably for Mr. Wilson too. I think we can all acknowledge that Mr. Wilson is trying to renovate his house so that he can live in it. But where we are today on June the eighth is we simply have an agreement that's gonna say, if you wanna, if you want us, if you want to try to renovate the house, these are the milestones that you will need to, to achieve.
Is that... Is, I was just gonna say with these, as I remember our council meeting, we did not, as a council, sign off on the open access aspect. Just giving the free rein.
And the city attorney has crafted that language. What we're trying to do is be fair, but we do have to inspect a house.
And that's reasonable, but I think as a council, we, we ask that that not be part of any agreement. That there just be sort of open access at all times.
And the council can change that. That's certainly the prerogative of the council.
I, I think we already did. I think that's what we said in May, that we didn't want that to be part of it.
And Dunne has those words.
Absolutely. And so I did go back and watch the video to assess what was determined by council as it relates to access to the property to perform inspections. That would essentially be required at some point. Um, and, and within the, the discussion, what came of it was that we would be allowed to have inspections, but we would provide advanced notice to Mr. Wilson prior to us going to inspect the property. And Mr. Wilson would be present on, on the property when we showed up for the inspection. So that has been incorporated into the agreement, written like that, such that it's not, we can just stop by whenever we get ready and he's gotta listen to the house. It's written such that we will provide with Mr. Wilson with advanced notice. We'll schedule an appointment. And then we'll go in and perform the inspection, the inspection with Mr. Wilson present on the premises. So that's how it's written in the agreement. That's before you and you all pack it.
That there is that advanced notice?
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
Mayor, may I ask?
Now, when, um, now, GUC has to be out there when you turn the water, well, they gotta turn the water on. And so they'll know whether there's leaks that's, that's endangering the house or whatever. So, um, when we get the, when you get them out there, this is where I'm seeing it. When you get them out there, then you can start, you know, your work. As long as it's fine, um, as long as the water is fine. And I guess the electrical is fine. When they turn that on, they don't have any problems. They don't catch on fire. Don't do anything to damage the house even more. And, um, so... If, if you and your family could come to the agreement that that's the next step for you. The next step for you is to get GUC to come out, right? Am I right, Tony?
I don't think that, yeah.
The next step would be for the city council to approve the agreement and then have the city and Mr. Wilson sign the agreement. And Mr. Wilson has been provided a copy of the agreement.
Right, I get that. But also, we, we thought we were gonna see the house. We thought we were gonna get some pictures. Um, so it's, it's, I get the agreement. I don't have an issue with that. But I feel like we're at an impasse because we don't know if you actually did anything. Do, do you understand what I'm saying? It's like, are we right, are we at the same place we were two months ago?
Mr. Wilson, you know I'm gonna say, no, we're not. The only reason why there hadn't been work done since the last time we talked is because of the permit situation.
Okay, so that's where the communication has to come in. You know, you have to let them know what's going on. Um, and that's why I even told them, make sure your sister was in those meetings with you because I don't want no misunderstandings of a misunderstanding.
I got you. And like I was just saying, I've been in at every meeting. I tried to prepare every document that they asked me for. Uh, the only reason to la... This was Monday. We were coming here today. They had a long time to say, Mr. Wilson, I wanna get some more pictures. And Monday wasn't a good day for me because the gentleman I said that wanted to put a thingy in my wall, he died. So I was not having a good day. And, um, like I said, I was just thinking about the last time. I said, yeah, come and take some pictures. I think they're taking pictures of good stuff. I come in here and the only thing I saw was nothing but burnt and negative stuff. And at that time, I said, I changed my mind. I said, I gotta go here. The permit hadn't been kicked back in yet, so I can't do nothing. I'm cleaning up, putting stuff out front. But the only pictures that he was gonna bring in today, and that's why I felt that way. But now, like I told Mr. Mills, he told me, whenever you got something for me to inspect, we agreed, I will call you. I will stay in contact with them. I'm right down the road.
Okay, so let me, let me say this, and if it's okay with, with my colleagues on the council. I would like to make a motion that we give Mr. Wilson six months. I think a year would be too long without any oversight, just being honest with you, to, um, work on the house. But it is gonna be your responsibility to contact staff. Like, they're gonna, they're gonna contact you, but it's gonna be your responsibility to do something as well. Um, and we have city managers and the two gentlemen behind you. Um, and Ms. Wall, if you feel like you're not being treated fairly, you're gonna have to speak up. You're gonna have to, like, advocate for yourself and your sister. I know she will, right? You guys cannot wait until you come before us and make your complaints. Because then I, like I said, we have nothing to fight with. And we were willing to give you a year, but I really think six months is what we need to do so we can see what's going on. We can't, we can't keep being in the same spot.
May I ask a question before, I may second that motion, but are you saying you're gonna, six months with no written agreement? Six months?
No, no, no. The written agreement has to be there because they have to communicate. And the communication is for your safety. So you won't have another house fire, so you won't have to spend additional money to get things redone. It's for you. And I don't mind fighting for you at all, and you know that. But you're gonna have to do a lot of the work. Not just the physical work. It's the verbally fighting for yourself to say, I need somebody to come here and inspect this. I need somebody to come and look at this. Don't look at it as they are the enemy. Believe me, they are not the enemy. Because nobody has picked up the phone and said, Monica, stop fighting for this man. Nobody has said that. Okay? But you gotta do your part. You got to.
Do you think six months is gonna be enough time to get a good start?
I can get started in the six months, but like, the last six months I had. If I can get started and not be stopped...
And that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen.
When I said, when I, when I said not be stopped, if you're gonna pull the permit, at least have the audacity to tell me why. Now, that last time, there were three to four inspections to come. I wasn't stopping anybody. The only time I did that just now because of the closeness of us coming and talking about it today.
Okay, so again, I would like to extend your time for six months, but you have to stick to the agreement.
Yes ma'am.
If you feel like you're being discriminated against or something is wrong and they're not treating you fairly, I need you to speak to one of these three individuals. Ms. Wall, Mr. Cowan, and Mr. Graves. Okay? And they will, they will get people on the ball and they will set things in order, okay? Because you cannot do this fight by yourself. You can't. It's not you against them. It's not. It's us against homelessness at this point.
And to clarify your motion, is that six months to complete all repairs or six months?
No, no, no. We're gonna come back in six months and see where the progress is.
Okay, I can second that.
Because if we come back in six months and nothing has been done, I don't know. And, and like I told you, in six months, you might have a whole new council. We don't know.
So I'm gonna second Councilmember Daniels' motion.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
It's not, you're not, a year's not, it's, it's off the table now.
No, it's not off the table, but we gotta get to six months because at this point, we're where we are the last time we were here.
Councilmember Smiley. So, the, the draft agreement in the agenda says, um, the owner shall submit proposed rehabilitation plans for the property, including a project timing, not to exceed 12 months in written cost estimates. So your proposal is that can his timeline be 12 months, but there must be a six-month, um... Gate where, you know, that some, you know, substantial 30, 40, 50% of the project timeline must have been accomplished?
Correct.
So is staff able to revise the, um, the agreement to, in addition to, he can set a 12-month, the agreement can lay out a 12-month rehabilitation plan, but there's a milestone at the six-month period where substantive progress has been made? And it doesn't have to be 50%, right? 25, 30%, something like that. Is that actionable? Does that translate her motion into...
I believe that based on that, that motion, we can keep the agreement as it is. But in the agreement, we will add a statement that would said that we will provide an update to council at six months from this date, so that would be December, the, the first or second meeting in December. We will provide an update to council of the progress that Mr. Wilson has made. If that is the, if that is the motion of, of the council.
Do you feel that that's a fair?
I think that's fair, that's fair. In six months, you probably see, I would have some inspections done way before that, hopefully. And then I think that's a good milestone.
Yeah, and you have more family here with you today, so I got more oversight.
I would like to just point out, and the attorney has reminded me of it. This is only works when we have a signed agreement.
Yep.
Okay, so if we do not have a signed agreement, then we will come immediately back to council.
We're gonna give him a year.
Yes, we are, but the agreement will have to be signed.
Right, and the agreement will have to be signed.
And Mr. Wilson has a copy of the agreement.
Okay.
Everybody's got a copy.
So there's been a motion made by Councilmember Daniels, right?
I think, I don't know, Mr. Rob, Councilmember Robinson?
Let me, let me do the motion real quick and then I'll call you right. Is there a second? Did you second it?
I seconded.
Okay, so a motion been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. Councilman Robinson?
I, I just, I want to make sure, I think there's some confusion, but I want to make sure I'm on the same page. This is related to staff. I have a house and I wanna add an addition to it. So I hire my general contractor. He comes to you, applies for the permit to do the addition. He tells you it's, uh, 800 square feet. And tells you, we're gonna do this, this, and this. And you have a program that lets you estimate the cost. Am I correct? So you don't go inspect that home, do you?
That is correct, yes sir. We look at plans, but not, not, we don't make a lot of decisions.
But when the scope of the work is done, if this site's electrical work, you have to send somebody in the home physically to inspect the electrical work to ensure it passes code. Is that correct?
All inspections have to be done before electric, the electrical system will be...
Oh, it's before it's drywalled in, so you can't see.
That is correct, yes sir.
And if I have plumbing, same thing, it's gotta be inspected.
Same thing, and, and if you cover it, we will request that you uncover it.
And so if you walk in and see something that's not done right, the inspector says, well, that, that's a hazard. They have to fix it, don't they?
That is correct, yes sir.
Because it's gotta be a code that's gotta be done to it.
That is correct.
And that work has to be done to code, no matter whether you're a general contractor that's licensed or whether either contractor homeowner acting for himself.
That is correct, yes sir.
So this case that we've got here is what I call a case of first impression. Because normally, you've not seen the home, you've not been in the home, so you just go off what the, the person tells you about his plan, right? But in this case, you've seen the whole home. You know exactly the state it's in, correct? So you know the square footage, you know all the plumbing, the electrical, everything that needs to be done to it to get it back up to code and get it to where it can be lived in. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes sir.
So that's something you normally don't have when you apply for a permit.
That's correct.
And that's because this is an issue of first impression, right?
Yes sir.
So you have that benefit and you plugged in the cost to make this home livable. Have you not?
Yes sir.
And is that $157,000?
That is an estimate that they came up with, that they went out and estimated, yes sir.
And that's my concern. That's a lot of money to put this home back up. But that's what you say has, your estimate is to put this home back up to livable and make it up to code.
Yes sir.
And the reason it's critical for your staff to be able to go in this home is, and this is probably more so because he, this, Mr. Wilson's not a licensed contractor. You wanna make doubly sure that the electrical wiring is done correctly and plumbing, so it doesn't create a hazard that could take somebody's life.
That, that's correct. And, and again, it doesn't matter if he's a licensed contractor or unlicensed contractor. Uh, they're all held to the same standard.
Yes, sir. So, so we're not treating Mr. Wilson, even though the law allows him to act as his own general contractor, not licensed, he's still held to the same building code that a licensed contractor is held to. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
And, and I think that's probably some of Mr. Wilson's frustration is, he's not familiar with that because he's not a licensed contractor, but he's held to that same standard.
That is correct.
And that's my concern. It's $157,000 to fix this house or some, it may not be correct, but that's one of my concerns about it. Are we spinning our tires? And I understand Mr. Wilson's desire to want to repair his home, but also look at, you know, a lot of money. But anyway.
Does that estimate include labor?
Generally, yes ma'am, in that calculated figure, it does include labor.
But they're providing their own labor.
And I should take some off of that because the labor will be done between me and my grandson and, and I got another son. So we gonna be all labor.
Here, here's my other concern. Mr. Wilson, if we're to do this tonight, sir, you have to understand and be crystal clear as a bell that if we do this tonight and you sign that agreement, we can't have, well, because we're doing the work ourselves and my, my children got sick or I got sick and we do it. We can't do that because this has been going on for a very long time. So we gotta find a remedy. Want you to fix it. I get it. It's your home. I get that more than you probably ever understand. I got a farmhouse. It's my home I grew up in. I don't want anything to happen to it. But in the same breath of air, we've gotta bring some conclusion to this and start getting moving in the right direction. And you have to cooperate with the people here because they're gonna hold you to the same standards they hold a licensed contractor to. So if we do this and we come back in six months, if we do that, we gotta see some substantial progress and we can't be coming back up here and they're telling us, well, he wouldn't let us in the house. And we look at it and you're going, well, you've done a couple of things and it's not really the progress. And it's not the code. You, if you come back up here in six months and, and you're hearing us, you're probably not gonna like, at lea... I know you won't like what I'm gonna say or decide, and you're probably not gonna like my fellow account because we gotta make some movement on this.
Yes, sir. I understand that.
Okay. I mean, that's what I really wanna do is...
You, none of the work in the last six months that y'all have seen.
Yes, sir.
But I will provide y'all with the pictures.
And again, they gotta see the work.
Right.
You understand that.
And I will call Mr. Mills and he will come inspect this work. I'm gonna do that. I know you ain't seen no progress. I, I know progress have been done. I've been to maintenance man on this home for 20 years, yes sir. And like I said, the plumbing has been, you know, they're gonna have to come to do the plumbing. You gotta at least turn the water on to see there any leaks or anything of that nature, but I know there ain't any. And I like a lot of stuff that...
You may know that, but sir, the law requires them to inspect your home.
Yes, sir.
And, and if you don't inspect the home, they can't approve it. They can't approve it. You don't make progress.
I understand.
You're gonna be in six months and it's not gonna be good for you if we, if you decide to do that enough. Okay? I, I just really want to emphasize, we wanna help you. We're trying to help you. We're bending like that, that strong oak that's bending. But we're kinda getting to the breaking point. We gotta get some progress going on. Okay, that's my comments, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. We talk to your whole family and you. Because, I mean, there's been a lot of homes torn down in West Greenville. And I, and I want to save everyone that I can because the people couldn't do anything to them. You know, they had to move out, move, move in the projects or wherever, whatever was necessary for them to do. You know, to move from their own home. And it, it would be hard, it would be hard to have to move from my home because I don't have the ability to fix it like, like code enforcement wants me to fix it. So, um, and, and, but have to realize, just like Mr., uh, Mr. Les says, you have to realize that they have a job to do and it's keeping you safe. And it's not, you know, if, if you're there in that house and say electricity comes on and you get electrocuted because it's not secure. They're gonna come and look, make sure everything is done right. And so, you know, we give you another year. I've, I've talked to some people, tried to get some volunteers come help you with your house. And, um, let's work together, okay? You have to work with them. And they, they agreed to work with you. So let's, let's, let's put all anger aside because this is important to you. This is your home. And you don't wanna see your home torn down.
No ma'am.
You don't wanna see it burned down. It was almost burned down by someone. You, you said you know who did it. Some of the guys that's sitting on this... you said you know who did it, some of the guys that's sitting on this vacant lot, so, um, but you have, you have to understand, okay? You understand that.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, and I want y'all to know that being a soldier, I understand, but I would love to have a chance to win this battle, but if I don't win it, I want the chance to fight for it.
Right, right.
And just for clarity, in order to receive the occupancy, are you talking both upstairs and downstairs?
Yes, ma'am, in this case, the house would have to be, meet a substantial completion before we would issue a certificate of occupancy.
And that's for water, lights, anything?
That is correct, yes sir.
But, I mean, water now, he said upstairs, but you don't, you dealing with minimum housing, I have one bathroom in the house, it don't have to be plumbing upstairs, that's what I'm saying, a lot of this money is being calculated into this, but I've been to maintenance man for this house for minutes, and I know the water is hooked up at, at the lower level, I don't need a bathroom upstairs.
Well, you have it upstairs, so we're just saying that the entire house.
All right.
And stuff, because I, I want you to understand, like...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley, I, I don't have any more questions for you, it's just staff, so I don't want to keep you standing there if you don't...
Well, I, I just have one more question for Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, do you believe in six months, you can have, as Councilmember Smiley said, a substantial percentage, we're not setting a percentage, we're saying even if it's, you know, 25 percent of the work done, 30 percent, just a substantial percentage of this work done, do you feel that you're able to do that in six months?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Smiley.
No, I have no questions for you, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I appreciate everybody's, you know, efforts to work with the, the homeowner. This originally arose as a code enforcement question, presumably because there were risks to the community in, on the property, and I think at this point, if we're going to go on for another year, I think we need, have those risks to the, not to people inside the house, I understand that that's a renovation issue, but are, are any of the code enforcement questions that came up that were involved, the risks to the community, have those largely been abated?
There's no risk to the community, there's a risk to him.
What were the original, perhaps I'm wrong, what were the original code enforcement questions? Was it simply minimum housing?
Well, this is a minimum housing.
Okay.
The other things that we have had, public nuisance issues, those have mostly been taken care of, but this center solely through the demolition order through the minimum housing standard.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
All right, there's been a motion made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn, any of the discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
motion back to six years.
All right, we'll move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearing adopted by the city council, the petitioner or representative of the petitioner, and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes, each with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and the city council during discussion. Comments made by the members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam manager, our first public hearing.
Item four is an ordinance to annex fire tower, commercial park, future lots one and two, property involving a total of 18.31 acres, located along the eastern and western rights of way of South Square Drive and Chapman Road. Planner Chris Kelly has the presentation. Mr. Kelly?
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
This property is located on the southern part of the city, more specific, this property is located on the eastern and western rights of way of South Square Drive and 500 feet east of Chapman Road. This property is located in the Fort Swamp watershed and will require 25 years stormwater detention. This property is located in a preferred growth area on the tiered growth map, and is located in city council voting district number five. This property is anticipated to yield 262 multifamily units with an estimated tax value of 65.5 million. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for our staff? Seeing none. Public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have
Good evening, my name's Ryan Heppleton, I work for Coderity's Developers, who's under contract for the development and, and under annexation, sorry. If there's any questions, I'm just here available for council and the mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Daniels, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
motion back to six years.
We'll move on to item number five, madam manager.
Um, five is an, is an ordinance to annex Ridgewood Farm, Phase One, property involving a total of 24 acres, located along the northern right of way of Thomas Langston Road and the current terminus of Stonewood Drive. Again, Ms. Kelly, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city, more specifically, this property is located along the northern right of way of Thomas Langston Road, and as you can see, this map looks a little different, the submitted annexation map was submitted in two sheets, so sheet one and two, sheet one is letter A here, and sheet two would be letter B, you'll see here in a minute. This property is located in the Swift Creek watershed, requiring 25 years stormwater detention. This property is also located in the primary service area on the tiered growth map, and is located in city council voting district number two. So here's sheet one, and here's sheet two. This property is anticipated to yield 56 single-family lots, estimated tax value of $14 million. I'll be happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Mr. Kelly did a great job with three...
He did, he did, he nailed it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you very much, public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Glover, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay.
motion back to six years.
We will move on to the final public hearing of the night, madam manager.
Item six is a second reading of ordinances making various revisions to the city code. Assistant City Attorney Donald Phillips has the presentation, Mr. Phillips.
Are we really making him walk all the way up here?
He's got a lot of fun.
Have you seen his office? He's a busy man.
Good evening, mayor, city council, we're picking back up from our May 8th workshop, the second reading of the ordinances making various revisions to the city code that was on Monday night's consent agenda. So, the first thing we need to look at is the old law, kind of what, what the general rule was prior to what I'm getting ready to talk about, and the old law was, the general rule was that unless council provides otherwise, a violation of any city ordinance is a class three misdemeanor or an infraction, as provided by North Carolina General Statute 14-4. Now, there were two statutes at issue, 168-175 and 14-4, and that was a general, general rule for years and years. In 2021, session law 2021-138, commonly known as Senate Bill 300, made changes to both of those statutes, decriminalizing certain ordinances and creating a new general rule. The new general rule is except for the types of ordinances listed in 160A, 175B1, which we'll cover that in just a second. A violation of a city ordinance may be a misdemeanor or an infraction, as provided by North Carolina General Statute 14-4, only if the city specifies such in the ordinance. So there were a couple of stipulations with regard to Senate Bill 300. Number one, no ordinance specifying a criminal penalty may be enacted at the meeting in which it is first introduced, hence the two readings, and number two, that B1 section that we talked about just a second ago, there are 10 specific items that cannot be criminalized in the ordinance, and those are listed there. Corrective action was therefore needed, essentially what I call ordinance surgery, and so the ordinance surgery is to remove criminal penalties from the ordinances that no longer may be enforced criminally, and to identify those specific ordinances in which a criminal penalty is requested, and applying criminal penalties to those specific sections. North Carolina General Statute 168-175A did not change by Senate Bill 300, and that stated that a city shall have power to impose fines and penalties for violations of its ordinances, and may secure injunctions and abatement orders to further ensure compliance with its ordinances as provided by this section. So essentially, like I was saying, the ordinance surgery, while we have the patient on the table, we need to talk about five other things that we can do to correct some of the ordinances that we have to correct. So number one is to bring city code provisions into better compliance as we're going through. Number two, standardize both criminal and civil penalties throughout. Number three, address appeal provisions. Number four, clean up ordinances, in other words, reword, move to other chapters, et cetera, and number five, repeal those ordinances that are preempted or otherwise not needed. So number one, bring city code provisions into better compliance. So a couple of examples of that are, for example, the animal protective ordinance that council passed last year, it was a complete rewrite, and that's an example of better compliance. Number two, what is proposed tonight is a complete rewrite of Title 10, Chapter 2. Number two is a goal, standardize both criminal and civil penalties, one of the things that's being proposed is with regard to the criminal penalty component, to make a class three misdemeanor and a criminal penalty of not less than $100 and not more than $500, and a civil penalty in a tiered system, so a first violation is a $100 ticket, second violation 250, and a third or subsequent $500. Number three, to address appeal provisions. Number one, for example, one of the things that we are asking to be approved, we created the appeal board in the Animal Protective Services Ordinance Rewrite, and we're asking for a modification of that, which I'll talk about in a minute. Number two is the proposed rewrite for a appeal board for parking violations and violations of Title 10, Chapter 2, and then number three is a modification to the existing default penalty that we have in our code, which is under Section 1-1-20, which basically says if there is no other appeal process specifically in an ordinance, 1-1-20 is the default appeal. So we wanted to kind of clean up that and address that as well. Number four, cleanup of ordinances, meaning reword and move to other chapters. So for example, the proposal for the appeal board for the Animal Protective Services is listed here, one of the, in the original, when it came to council last year, it was a three-member board with a veterinarian being on the board, and I think that we've had difficulty in getting a veterinarian, and one of the things that we're looking at is the proposal that's in front of you. Number two, to move and reword current city code, for example, motorized vehicles on greenways, that's currently found in Title 12, and so city staff is of the opinion that that's a better fit under Title 10, which is dealing with transportation and traffic, it seems like it's, should be something that both the public and, and those enforcing these ordinances can, and better, and more easily find. Number five, repeal those preempted or otherwise not needed, for example, we have an ordinance regarding bicycle helmets, it's preempted by state statute under 20, North Carolina General Statute 20-171.9, and number two, for example, of those that we're recommending to appeal, is the 6-1-2 regarding the public works director's special powers of arrest. So that was one of the ones that we felt like needed to be repealed as well. So by the numbers, ordinances affected for tonight's consideration, 262 ordinances, ordinances that are being repealed outright are 155, ordinances that are added back, and a lot of those are being added back in a little bit written, rewritten form, 66 ordinances where criminal penalties were just added or revised, or 27 ordinances that were otherwise revised, 12, and then two where criminal penalties were completely removed. So the next steps, hold the public hearing and recommend approval of all proposed ordinance revisions before you tonight.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I have a question about this change to the Animal Protective Services Appeal Board, this is the first time we're seeing this, is that right?
No, ma'am, it was before council at the May 8th workshop, and it was also Monday night's meeting as well.
Where this change came before the city council?
Yes, ma'am. This proposed change.
I know we, that was during our workshop, we looked at a lot of ordinances, I don't remember this one being pulled out and discussed.
It, it was, it was in the PowerPoint as well, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well then I missed it, so, but I'm not missing it tonight, because I have concerns about this, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into these ordinances and truing them up, and I think that's a, that's a work that's not only needed, but it's important, and I support. This, however, I have concerns about, because the appeal board for the animal protection ordinances, the role of the appeal board was to, to provide the opportunity if, if someone, if, if our officers declare your dog a dangerous dog, so you have a way to appeal that. The way this is crafted now, it looks to me like it's got the chief of police and the city manager, and then a designee, again, that's going to be designated by the city manager, and I, I certainly have all respect for our city manager, but, but this is, this has taken a process that included an outside member, an animal health professional, and now it's all, we come back in-house, it's all us, it's all the city, and I have concerns about that, I also have concerns that this does not specify that it should be an animal professional, and, and we did, and we worked so hard up here on council to find a vet, and, and if you look at what's happening in veterinary medicine right now, it's, you can understand why a veterinarian is not available. Not only are they overworked, but they also have a suicide rate that's five times that of the general, the general public, so I think that's a good move, that we're no longer looking for a veterinarian. What I'm concerned about is that we don't have an animal professional as part of that appeal board. Is there any way, you know, is that something where tonight I would propose that, or how would that work?
Currently, the appeal board really is not functioning, because we don't have a three-member appeal board. Chapter 67 of the general statutes does require the appeal board, and so certainly you can, if you would like to modify that, you can modify that, but it's going to be required to come back for two readings, so we would probably need to maybe pull that particular language and continue out the nonexistence of the appeal board, until we can get that sort out, sorted out.
And I would say, and I know we're having a public hearing and a full discussion, but I would say at least until we have the opportunity to look at an animal professional, and then if we, if we, we can't find an animal professional, absolutely, this is good.
I would say there's no requirement in Chapter 67 for a specific animal professional, but I certainly, I mean, defer to council as far as who they want on the appeal board.
I think an animal professional, if you've got an Animal Protective Services Appeal Board, I think an animal professional is, is, is a, we'd like at least one member, I would like to see at least one member there, but I'll let you continue with your presentation, and we'll have our public hearing. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open, those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have three
He's not coming to speak.
She saws this other side of the room.
Did you call me?
Yeah.
Did I apologize?
No, we did not.
Did they call you?
It's a public hearing, we thought you were coming to speak.
You've got to understand I'm dead too.
What?
You're going to get arrested.
All right, seeing none, those who speak in opposition to the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record, first person has 10 minutes, all others have three Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Smiley.
I move to approve the, the, all the items as written. I understand there will be discussion of that, but that's my, that's my motion.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other discussion?
I would like to propose a friendly amendment that the section on the Animal Protective Services Appeal Board be removed, and that that be subject to further revision.
I, you know, this is the third time we've heard this. It was the first, it was, you know, the, all the language is exactly as it was the first two times we've heard it. I think if there was a time to pull things out and recommend changes, that should have been done previous to now, and I would, I would not, I do not accept that amendment. She's wanting to make a, a new motion of her own, but I'm, my motion, I would like to remain the same.
When has this come to us for a vote? We, we had it at our workshop, but we didn't vote then.
On Monday night, it was for first reading on Monday night.
But that wasn't for a vote, so.
I'm sorry, it's been read to us three times, and if there was, and the appropriate time to have suggested changes was during one of those times rather than here at the very end after the public hearing, after everything that's already been done. That, so I think that if we want to change it from the new text, we certainly could entertain that as a future action, but I think that at this point, we should approve it in the form it's been given to us three times.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I think the issue for this council is not how many times we've heard it, but do we want an ordinance that is fair and that is all-encompassing, and that captures the need to have an animal professional on the Animal Protection Appeal Board. As, as it is now, it's, it's, it is people who are not in that field, and I think it's incumbent upon us to pull that out and say, we need to true this up, we need to, to look at this again, because as, as it is now, that, that animal appeal board doesn't have anybody from the animal profession on it. And I think it's a very minor thing to pull that out. Again, I offer it as a friendly amendment, we go ahead with everything else, pull that out and look at it, while I put it off for another meeting.
And a friendly amendment requires the concurrence of the person who made the motion, and I don't, I don't concur.
All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Blackburn.
I'm going to sort of follow my sword on this one, and, and, and I don't want to make another motion, and I think that, and I'm sort of flummoxed that it's not accepted as a friendly amendment. I'll just make another motion then to approve these changes with the exception of the Animal Protection Appeal Board, and to have that pulled out for further review. So that's my motion, a substitute motion.
Is there a second?
Do we have the first one?
No, we have, she's made a motion. If she's, if it's seconded, then it would become the main motion.
See none, dies for a failure of a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
We'll move on to other items of business. We'll move on to item number seven, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item seven, our ordinance is adopting the fiscal year 2324 City of Greenville budgets, including Shepherd Memorial Library, the Pitt Greenville Convention of Visitors Authority, and the Greenville Utilities Commission. Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has a very short presentation.
Very short, I like that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Tonight, we take the opportunity to approve the 2024 fiscal year budget. The 2024 proposed budget totals $459.7 million, just for the city's operating funds, that totals $160.5 million, of which the general fund makes up $101.5 million. Any questions?
All right. That was awesome. Any questions?
I appreciate that.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Glover, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. And the news is entirely disappointed. They were waiting for a story.
I hope she recognizes it's a unanimous vote on behalf of the city councils, the adoption of the budget.
And efficient at that.
Not just the council, everybody in the room. Nobody in the room objected.
Yes.
Bye, Tony.
See you next year.
All right, let's move on to the last item under Other Items Business. Madam Manager.
Thank you. The last item is a discussion of Village of the Arts overlay district zoning, and this was an item that was added to the agenda by Councilmember Blackburn, and I will turn it over to her.
Thank you so much.
I think we have a picture to put on the screen, there you go.
Yes, and thank you, Brock, so.
Hey, Donald had to go down there. Do you want to go down there and give the presentation?
No. Besides, I'm wearing shorts, I was clay shooting today. I asked for us to, to talk about this because, and it's, it's certainly timely because we're presently discussing ordinances, and we are encouraging mixed-use development. So this is an example of mixed-use development, and the idea came to us as a council from Mr. and Ms. Cosgrove, who were here earlier, and it just, I did a little research into it, it sounds like a very innovative, vivacious idea, a way to really have, just a, a, a new way to look at a neighborhood that is mixed-use. And instead of saying we're going to allow a neighborhood store under a CN development, we're saying we're going to allow you to have your art studio, and you can have people come and look at your works and maybe buy your works. And of course, this zoning or this overlay would of course always be respectful of the residents, the characteristics of the neighborhood, but it would be an overlay that could, could really be a dynamic mixed-use ordinance or overlay for our community. And the picture you see here is in Brayden, Florida, and where it has been instituted. And if you search online for Village of the Arts, it just, you get all kinds of hits about this is a place to be, you want to come here, and how innovative it is, and I, and I, I thank the Cosgroves for sharing this with us. And what I would like to propose and present to my peers on council is that we ask our staff to look at this zoning overlay for Village of the Arts District and come back to us with a possible ordinance that we could adopt. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. Did you really think I was going to not ask for a discussion? Councilmember Bell.
His fingers.
Hey, I got a motion, a second. Councilmember Bell.
Are we going to direct staff to look at a specific area, or just anywhere in the city?
Anywhere is appropriate.
And the gentleman that spoke earlier mentioned that there were some not just live workspaces, there were restaurants and things in, in this neighborhood, is that something that council is comfortable with as well?
I, all, all, my motion does is ask staff to look at ordinances, and really, in the end, the ordinance would, would be whatever we pass for the, for the overlay. And you, we already have neighborhood commercial where you can have restaurants like Christie's in the University Neighborhood, so this is not, I, I don't see it as anything that's going to be out of character with things we already do, and, but, but my motion is just to have, ask our staff to come back with an ordinance, some language for us, some examples, and then we can discuss those.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Now, the most anticipated part of the meeting, the city manager's report.
I have no report this evening, Mayor.
Disappointed the crowd. Let's start with Councilmember Robinson tonight.
Mayor, thank you for the opportunity, but I don't have any comments tonight.
All right, Councilmember Daniels, mixing it up.
Just wanted to remind, just wanted to remind everyone that Jackie Robertson will have their opening day on Sunday, the 11, at Epps Recreational Center. No? Oh, okay, and that's all, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a moment for discussion amongst the council. I serve as a liaison for Uptown Greenville, and there has been significant interest and discussion lately about ticketed concerts and performances on Town Common. And as those discussions have taken place, it's been made very clear that the cost to put on the type of event and to bring in the type of performer that seems to be of interest to the board is going to be a pretty significant financial cost, and so a discussion that has taken place about a way to subsidize that cost is to use revenue from alcohol sales. I know that several years ago, we put in place a policy that allowed for beer and wine sales on Town Common. That board has asked me to propose the idea of allowing spiritus alcohol as well. I think we've done a really good job with the events that have taken place on Town Common. I've never, to this day, heard of any sort of issues arising from, from the sale of the beer and wine. I'm sure staff could probably confirm that for us. We've also put in place the social, social district and have not had any issues, to my knowledge, with that as well, and so I think we've got a pretty good track record so far of, you know, some, some positive and successful implementations of, you know, ordinances that allow for those sales, and I think that we should direct staff, or I would like to make a motion that we direct staff to bring back a plan to add the allow for spiritus liquor at Town Common at our next meeting in August.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Blackburn.
We already allow beer and wine sales on the Town Common, so can you help me understand your motion again?
That, it would be, we would be adding the ability for them to sell like a cocktail.
Oh, mixed drinks.
Whoa.
Whoa, whoa. No, that's so swank, okay, all right.
The reason being is that there's, there's a higher profit margin to the, to those types of cocktails. A lot of places throughout North Carolina, Live Oak Pavilion in downtown Wilmington would be a perfect example, it's a public park, they allow those, and they've been able to attract some really, really big names in the music industry.
Yeah, I just didn't understand what, what we were looking for, since I thought we were already doing that. I didn't know this was a possibility, so, and so what, no, I think, I mean, well, we can talk about it when it comes, but it will come back to the council with full supporting information, a plan, how it's going to work, what can be served, all the permits, how that's all going to, that's what we're asking for tonight.
Yeah, just asking for the, for the plan to come forward, and, you know, if, if y'all want to direct staff to get some public input, we can, but I know that we already took a significant amount of public input when we initially put beer and wine in there, so that's up to y'all.
I, I mean, not to get too much in the weeds on this, absolutely, I support staff bringing it back. Hopefully, it would be subject to a public hearing at some point.
We've already had public hearings related to this, correct?
We have not had public hearings, we may have had some.
Public comment, okay, sorry.
I would just, I don't know if this is considered a friendly amendment or whatever, maybe talk about it when it comes back to us, just as long as we have an opportunity for some kind of public forum, just to hear from the public what they'd like it to do and see in it.
Certainly the prerogative of the council.
I'll let everybody else weigh in.
Is that something we've been?
We talked about it a lot before you got here, so I'll just let everybody else kind of weigh in if there's any other comment on that, because we, we have had a significant amount, we had what, two or three public input sessions on it?
We did, now this was several years ago, again, it was probably 1819 that we had those discussions.
Have we fielded any complaints about the sale of the beer and wine or anything since then?
Any issues that we've had related to the sale of beer and wine on either Town Common or Five Points.
And we've had probably.
No, science, I'm surprised.
And we've probably had since then, what, since we put that in place, three dozen, four dozen performances?
We've had a number of concerts, we've had Pirate Fest, where beer and wine is sold, we have rented out or leased out Five Points for some concerts, and so we've not, are not aware of any issues.
My, my, my concern here is not that there's a problem with what's going on, I think it's, I think this is personally, it sounds like a wonderful idea. I mean, martinis on the Town Common, what's not to like? But, the only thing I'm saying is, I just would like to let the public weigh in, because I think that's an important part of any process. That's all I'm saying. And, and if there was public, the public forums that took place several years ago, it's probably time to let the public speak again about this topic.
Any other input? All right. We got a motion?
I made a motion.
And it was properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Did you get the whole motion and everything? We got some sneaky council members that are putting in their council comments.
So the question that I have is, Councilmember Bell, direct staff to bring back a plan that will allow spiritus liquor sales down at the Town Common, bring that back in August. Is that right?
And does my request that we have public, some kind of public engagement on this, does that form part of what goes on the record?
That's what I assumed. I thought that's what we were voting on.
That's fine.
Okay, well, then, that is what.
There we go. Anything else, Councilmember Bell?
May I just clarify, so is the intent that the staff would seek public comment before the plan, that we would provide to you all in August, or would you prefer that we provide a plan to you in August, you all have some, review the plan, and at that point, we seek some public comment?
I think based off of the, the, the information that I've gotten from that board is there's a hope for a ticketed performance in the fall. We've got the majority of June, all of July, to, to get some public comment. Do you think that, do you think, do you think that's doable?
When you bring, when we bring the plan, you would like us to have already gotten some public?
As long as you think you can accommodate that.
Okay, I think that we can, certainly we know that, we can try to shoot for, for end of July, beginning of August for some public comment.
Okay.
Put the plan together first.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
The city manager's planning on asking people in Rome, Italy, what they think about this, I think is.
The only other comment that I have is Father's Day is quickly approaching, and I just want to wish Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there.
Good job. Councilmember Smiley.
So I just will note that four of the five, of the city's interns are here, and the fifth one, I think, is having a birthday today, is that the?
Wow.
So, on your birthday, you don't have to come to council, is that the, that the model that we're, we're figuring, we worked out here? Okay, it's good to know, good to know.
Have to write that down.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I'm going to take, take careful note of that, thank you.
Man, calling her out.
Hey, her name's Grace, and she's not here, that's, I'm just saying.
Rick. Hey, thank goodness you work with the city manager's office, right?
You just tell her she was missed, how about that?
All right, let's move on to Councilmember Blackburn.
I just want to remind everybody that Sunday in the Park is up and running, and it's now at 6:30, it used to start at 7:00, we're starting, it's starting a little early now, 6:30 to 8:30. This is an amazing summer program that the City of Greenville has done for 50 years, it's the 50th anniversary, so just a big shout out to us, the City of Greenville, it's free, and it is what I do every Sunday night, and I highly recommend it if you, if you thought, oh, I've always wanted to go to Sunday in the Park, I just never made it, please go. If you haven't ever gone, it's such a special atmosphere, and there's kids dancing, and just, you bring your chairs and your blanket, and it's just a wonderful evening. There's food trucks now, and they're going to be there at 5:00, and some of the bands, The Monitors, Hank Pating the Current, Pinello, Molasses Creek, I mean, these are just, these are bands that are really high caliber bands, so everybody, Sunday in the Park, every Sunday in June and July, 50th anniversary, and I hope you will come. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Daniels, got something else to say?
I do. Forgive me, and thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
I want to remind everyone that Juneteenth is quickly approaching, and we will have Greenville Grooves at the Town Common on the 16th from 4:00 to 7:00. What time?
The concert's from 6:00.
From 6:00 to 8:00.
With fireworks.
With fireworks. We're going to have a nice time without the storm this year. Yeah, so we're looking forward to that. On Saturday, we will have events in West Greenville, starting from Epps Recreational Center, down to Albemarle, past 1311, it's going to be fun, safe fun for everybody, right, Chief? And Sunday, we will have a sunrise service at the Sycamore Gateway, at the Plaza, thank you, at 6:30 a.m. Please come out, everyone, and support. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
Do I have anything to say?
Of course you do. Of course you do.
I want to thank everyone for their hard work, city manager and managers, and everyone that's a department head that had to put the budget together for us, so just want to say thank you, and I know that you're glad that it's over and that you can get a sigh of relief that it's been adopted. So I know it's not easy. I know you have to do a lot of changes, and you have to do a lot of things, but thank, thank you for all the dedicated people who worked to put our budget together.
Good?
Mm-hmm, good.
All right. I also would like to say that I want to thank the city staff again for the incredible job with the budget. You know, this is my eighth year for the budget. I can't believe it. It's almost been a decade that I've been on the councilor as the mayor, and I will say that for eight years, we've never had a tax increase, so that is incredible. That means that staff has done a great job with budgeting. The first year that I was on the city council, the previous manager had said, put up a graph showing that our expenses were going here, and our income was going the other direction, and I was just befuddled. I couldn't figure out how that was possible. Somehow, our new city manager and our management staff has been able to right the ship, and we're in there going in the right direction, and the staff has done a great job. We appreciate all that you've done. We've got an award-winning financial department that does a great job to make sure that our city's in a good place, so I want to say thank you to all of them for their hard work and their dedication to the city. I also want to say, congratulations. I have two champions in my family. My first one, Mary Kate, my oldest, was a 10U tournament champion for the Pitt County Girls Softball League, and my youngest daughter, Caroline, who is in the 6U, was selected to be on the All-Star team, and, or, the All-Stars, and they made two teams out of it, and there was a three-game series that started Tuesday, Wednesday, and thankfully, they won Tuesday and Wednesday, because I'm here tonight, and they are the champions. So I am very excited, very proud of them. I will tell you, two years ago, or probably about four years ago, I would never imagine that I had two girls playing softball. They were ballerinas, and I thought my wife would never let them put on cleats. And I was successful. So congratulations to both of them. They had a great season. Thank you to Pitt County Girls Softball League for all that they've done.
Tomorrow afternoon, they'll be in college. Get ready.
That's, I can just imagine, so I'm, I'm not looking forward to that, so.
A lot of travel ball in between.
That's right. That's right. But I hope everybody has a good summer. Hope all the kids, is tomorrow their last day, the kids' last day in, in school, right? I think so? Or today?